The October 16th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. Color guard. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color guard, retire the colors. That was PAC 348, Den 16, sponsored by Puck's Christie Church and the scouts were Joseph Larson, Casper Borgrave, Ben Van Sloon, Grant Fein, Jacob Meyer, Jaden James, David Rigali, Ryan Cunningham, Jacob Terry, and Owen Burkholtz. The leaders are Dave Meyer and Keith Fein. Thank you very much for participating in tonight's meeting. Prior to the start of each city council meeting, we have an opportunity for citizens to address the council from the time period of 6:30 to 7 o'clock in the council chambers. If you wish to speak during this portion of the meeting, please contact the city manager's office at (949) 8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, I may open up the floor to unscheduled speakers. Tonight, we had two scheduled speakers and we did not have enough time for unscheduled speakers. These portions of the meeting are not televised or recorded. If you have any questions about open podium, please contact the city manager's office again. First item up is proclamations and presentations. Community mural. Mr. Getzschel, did you want to discuss this? Oh, Mr. LaHanna.
Yes, Your Honor, council members. As you know, we've been focusing and trying to introduce art into the community, specifically public art. And one of the efforts that we've recently taken was a community mural. And this was unveiled at the recent Heritage Festival. And tonight, we're wanting to present this to the council. This is kind of a temporary framing, but it'll see fairly shortly a framing that will be much more permanent. And the idea with this mural is that it will be able to travel throughout the community. And tonight with us, we're fortunate to have the artist Emily Taylor, who is also one of our artists and instructors at the Eden Prairie Art Center. So what I'd like to do is let Emily tell you a little bit about the process that she went through to develop this very neat and interesting representation of our community.
Thank you. Hello.
Hi.
So I guess I'll start with the meeting that I had with Lindsay and I was her. It was her inspiration to do this project. She wanted to create a mural that would connect directly with the community using inspiration from the community. So I actually did a series of interviews with children at the Lake Riley Day Camp, with students with special needs, with students at the Art Center, employees, and also families in the neighborhood. And they would indirectly with letting you know which buildings were, some of the history I actually learned about. We have the Anderson School House here, we have the Cummins House, we have the Peony Garden. And nothing is exactly to scale. It's all about removing yourself, looking back from a perspective where maybe things are a little bit nosey or... And also, it's personalized. There are stories, individual stories. Some of the students from the special needs camps would talk about swimming at a McDonald's. And another student from the Lake Riley Day Camp told me a story about coming to the city center with his father and coming back home by the garbage. So I thought that was kind of comical. Of course, there was a police car peeking out back there. There are some members from, or some employees from the city center, the Art Center, that are actually displayed there. Connie and Lindsay. So it's a very personal piece, but yet at the same time, I try to keep it accessible to the general public.
So we'll leave this here after the council meeting. If people want to come up and take a closer look, or members of the audience, if they're still around, would like to take a closer look. I've looked at it a few different times, and I always seem to find something new and something different. You'll recall at our community center, we put a mural up on the wall of different tiles. And those tiles are representative of things. Some of them, you need to take a little bit of leap to figure out what that is. But what this allows for us to do is to help people interpret it. You might imagine this in the future as a neat coloring contest, or maybe a find the and exercise where the kids can go through and find the old Anderson Lake Schoolhouse, or where the city hall is, or the library. Our intent is that it will travel around to places like the library, the mall, the community center, here at city hall. May spend a couple months in each place and then move along so that we can introduce more people to the painting and let them think about what Eden Prairie means to them.
Thank you. Thank you, Emily. It's wonderful. Is it acrylic?
It is acrylic, yes.
You use acrylics?
Yes.
It's just beautiful. And when I look at it, it makes me think about what our old park and rec director, Mr. Lambert, used to talk about. He said, "If you looked at a picture of Eden Prairie from about 1940, if you took an aerial photo, there wouldn't be very many trees because it was farm fields." And the amount of trees we have today is so much more than what we had back then because we filled in the farm fields. We have this urban forest now. And you've really caught the urban forest with this picture. And it also reminds me of what you see if you go to the top of Southwest Transit's parking garage and you get an overview of the city. Have you done that?
I did that. I took a panoramic.
Yes.
Yeah, panoramic.
Yeah, it's wonderful. Wonderful. Thank you. I can't wait to see it around. It'd be wonderful, too, if you had a company in peace. I mean, I'm assuming you're going to have a picture on the website. It'd be nice to have an accompanying piece indicating what all of those buildings are for people that might not know. Thank you so much. What an excellent job. So if you want to turn it around so everybody else can see it, I bet they'd love to see it. And I think it's worth a round of applause. Thank you so much.
I also have the next item.
Okay, you also have the next item. The next item is Twin Cities Obesity Prevention Program.
Yeah, you'll remember back in August, we became one of the few cities that are a part of their organization in helping to spread the word and be a part of an action that really makes people aware in our own actions as a city to help people fight obesity, eat healthier, and have a healthier lifestyles, which really fits with us building our community and giving people really good opportunities within our city and within our park system. So tonight, we're fortunate to have them back. They'd like to present us with some window decals that we envision putting in our city vehicles or at windows on city buildings as you come in. And they'd like to say a few words tonight, so we have a couple representatives from the Twin Cities Obesity Coalition tonight.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us. My name is Jennifer Anderson. I'm with the Twin Cities Medical Society. The Twin Cities Obesity Prevention Coalition is a project of the medical society, and I'm the project coordinator.
And I am Dr. Pete Danelle, and I am the current president of the Twin Cities Medical Society. And I want to thank you very much for the leadership that you've shown, both for, on behalf of your community and the residents of Eden Prairie, as well as all communities across Minnesota. And you do act as an inspiration for other communities who are looking at ways that they can encourage their citizens to be healthier. And so we have here, and Jennifer is holding, the window clings and the window decals that I understand and you have more information about.
Yeah, so as each city passes a resolution, we come back and we present you with these window clings. They're static window clings that can go at the entrances of city buildings. You've all chosen also to put them on your fleet of vehicles, which I think is fabulous. I think you've inspired Egan to put them on their vehicles as well, so they're getting more. But this really tells people that Eden Prairie has taken a leadership role in creating a healthier community. And it tells people that, you know, that they should be proud to live here. So we encourage you to put these up anywhere. If you need more, we can get you more. There's also a little instrument in here to put them on your windows. And so just thank you again for your leadership. You're the second city to pass. There is a third city that we hope will be passing next month. And we'll let you know who that is when the time comes. But, so, thank you.
Thank you. And those window clings are great. It's a great reminder to us and to the people that come into this building or see our vehicles that obesity is something we are concerned about and that we are doing what we can to make this a very walkable community and one where people are getting exercise and dealing with health issues. So thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
Move approval.
Second. Items to add.
Your Honor, just the one council member report on honeybees that we heard about during our open forum.
Okay, and I have one item I wanted to add about traffic. Anybody else? Okay. All in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of minutes from the council workshop held Tuesday, October 2nd?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to correct? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held the same day, October 2nd, 2012? Second. Again, any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And again, I abstain. Is there a motion for approval of the consent calendar?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to pull for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of consent calendar? Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. That brings us to our first public hearing, which is a resolution approving special assessments. Mr. Getzschel.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an annual item that we have on our calendar where the council needs to hold a public hearing and by a resolution, approve all the various special assessments associated with projects throughout the year. Some projects that are based on developments in the city and some that are based on supplemental assessments or contracted removal assessments that the city must do. That number 570,891, you'll notice on the sheet of assessments, there are two projects that play a huge part of that. One is a construction project in and around Grace Church where they're paying a very large assessment, as well as you'll recognize a lot of the other development projects that have come our way throughout the year where there are assessments associated with those, which we need to certify by, I believe it's the end of November of this year. And I think the city attorney mentioned you had one comment related to the timing that's in the resolution. But all I would have to add then is that you would hold a public hearing and then adopt the resolution approving the assessments.
Yes, there'd be just a slight wording change in the resolution to refer to 30 days with respect to payment without interest rather than a fixed date. And so we've substituted that and put that in the mayor's signature package.
Right, okay. All right. Any questions for staff? Mr. Case.
Are we allowed tonight to vote on Bella Reeve prior to having final approval or even second reading approval?
It's on the list for special assessments.
Is that, I mean, I don't know. Is that okay?
The Bella Reeve, which is on the agenda to...
Is the public hearing next, and then yet we're approving now the special assessment, but we haven't approved the project? I don't know. You're the attorney.
Yes, I think that we can. These are special assessments for trunk, water, and sewer, and there will be a benefit to the property for the connection to those. So I think it would be appropriate to act on this item even before you take action on the actual subdivision project itself.
If we happen not to vote approval, then would that negate this, or...
No, not necessarily. I mean, again, the assessments are based upon benefit to the property, and bringing sewer and water to a property is per se one of the classic benefits that makes it available for development. So whether this particular development is approved or not, bringing those kinds of infrastructure improvements will automatically increase the value of the property and therefore the assessment is appropriate.
Okay.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on these assessments? Okay, if you could come up to the podium.
Does this relate to the special assessment on my property, which is for $1,039.08?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you want to come up and address us on that then?
Correct.
Okay.
Government has an extreme habit of creating externalities.
Could you give your name and address for the record, too? Okay.
Without respect to consequences for the individual. And here's a signed copy and then copies of it. Good evening. My name is Dean Edward Longseal, and I'm here with my lovely wife, Marcella Dean, with respect to the special assessment proposed on PID 2311622330010 for the amount of $1,039.08, also known as tract H of registered land survey number 751 in the registers entitled County of Hennepin, Minnesota. This amount was paid in full yesterday, Monday, October 15th. We do not present the following information. In fact, as a hardship case, as defined under MS 435.1932, excuse me, 195. But we wish to make it clear to the council, or as Paul Harvey would say, the rest of our story. I began employment at Eden Corporation Charlotte Lynn in September '76. And you might remember the girder-shaped sign out on Highway 5 that was daily saying on it. And that same corporation was recently in the Sun, as a front page article. In May of 1977, we purchased the double bungalow at this address, 12461, 12465, Sennett Road in Eden Prairie. In 1988, we obtained our current residence on Creekwood Drive, just across Purgatory Creek from our original double bungalow with the said PID number. After 33 years with Eden, I was laid off in January 2009, along with 8,600 other people. I've not worked since then. Since the property was vacant, we canceled our insurance on the building after paying it for 32 years and never having a claim. In late 2011, when a relative falling on hard times needed housing, we remodeled completely the three-bedroom side. The fire started December 26, 2011, between 2:00 and 3:00 a.m. on the outside deck. It burned up the outside wall and into the attic. We were forcefully prevented from any action on the property by the police. The fire chief specifically told us that we were denied the ability to secure the property ourselves and the job would be done by a contractor. The chief said the city would pay for this emergency board up since there was no insurance. It was never revealed to us that would be assessed for this later. Furthermore, we object to the amount of money that has been billed for this emergency board up since, as the picture shows, it's less than $50 worth of materials and two man-hours worth of work. And we know because we were there and along with the media. We don't intend to recover this amount of money that we paid yesterday from the city or anything like that. So, you know, I guess that's our start in resolving the special assessment for our property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wanting to address the council? Okay. Counsel?
Could someone just address this, just so that we don't leave it hanging?
You know, I guess one question I have, too. Your handout talks about it being paid.
They paid the $1,039.08.
Okay. So, you know, if it had been paid, obviously, it wouldn't be assessed now, so this is leading up to that meeting. You know, I'm aware of the fire and the circumstances around it and the work that the, you know, the communication that you've had with the inspections department and what you're trying to do with the home. I'm not aware of the circumstances surrounding not being aware of that there'd be a cost for the boarding. So I'd have to talk to our building official or fire chief around the circumstances surrounding this exact assessment. I'm aware of the property and what had happened, but I'm not aware that you, you know, your discussion of not being aware of the assessment. And had you brought your concern with the assessment to the city prior to this? Because I believe we would notify you in advance that there might be an assessment.
And the point is, we never knew the amount that was charged. And we spoke yesterday with the city chief, and he was going to provide us with the bill that the city had paid.
From the people that closed it up.
Sure.
Mr. Getzschel, would you be willing just to connect and just maybe...
Oh, definitely. Definitely. I was even going to say, counsel, I know the timing is an issue in terms of if we remove this from the roll tonight, it probably would not then be able to be assessed within this year. But obviously, if there's questions, we could wait. But that's why I asked about the payment.
I was wrong when I responded. It's the 30th, not the 15th, so we do have time. I'm sorry.
So, yeah, I would recommend that we then remove this item and then we can work with the homeowner and find out some more information.
Sounds better.
Yeah. Give a report back to us then, or if it comes back, that'd be great.
Definitely. Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Yeah. Thank you. Is there a motion, then?
I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution approving all special assessments presented in the fall of 2012, with the exception of this property that we just discussed.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you for coming. The next item is the Home Depot Garden Center expansion. Mr. Getzschel.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a planned unit development concept on 13.16 acres, a planned unit development review with waivers on the same 13.16 acres, a zoning district amendment within the commercial regional service zoning district and site plan review for the Home Depot at 13100 Valley View Road. These requests are related to an expansion of the garden center at Home Depot and also for a truck rental. This project was brought to the planning commission and recommended for approval 5-0 at their most recent meeting on October 8, 2000. And I believe the project proponent from Home Depot may be here to provide a brief presentation of the project, and then staff and the project proponent can answer any questions you may have.
If you want to come up to the podium, or do you want to use the overhead? Okay. Then be there.
Oh, you want some here. You want to come here now? We have a microphone issue.
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
I'm not too technical, so that was lucky.
Well, we can hear you.
All right, I won't touch it this time. My name's Mike Roach. I work with Greenberg Farrow. We represent Home Depot as Development Services and Architects. The project is, as you stated, to expand the existing garden center toward the front parking lot to provide them more space for seasonal sales items and to provide screening as required. The other part of the project is for, to introduce Penske Truck Rentals through Home Depot. It's a national program that they've been doing throughout the country at their stores and to provide parking for six to eight Penske trucks in their parking lot. Where we've shown them on the plan is the typical place that they put them, but if council feels there's a better place for them or which would provide better screening for them, we'd certainly be, you know, willing to work with staff to everybody's approval. That's basically it.
Okay. Questions for the proponent? I don't see any lights. I have one. Could you talk about the fencing around the garden center?
Sure. It's, the fencing would be...
Do you have a picture of what that fencing looks like?
Uh, yeah, here we go. It's, it would be masonry piers and ornamental metal fence to match exactly what we have at the existing garden center. The idea would be to just blend it in as if it were always there. Same materials, same colors.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson.
I had a question about the placement of the Penske truck, which is obviously very much in the middle of the parking lot. On the other hand, when you looked at the area by the garden center, there's a number of parking spots along that side place. And I did have some question about why, I'm sure for advertising in the middle of your parking lot is great, but it would seem to be both adjacent to, you know, a place where you had employees to park it over by the, along the garden center area, where it would be more off to the side, albeit not quite as good a billboard.
The location that we show them at is, let me, go that way, is near the lumber canopy area, which is right here.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, the staff that rents the trucks is typically at the service desk inside there. So that's the main reason that they put them in that location. However, again, we are more than happy to work with the city to find the best screened location. We just, this is where we start out, and if, you know, for operational, that's easiest for them, but we can make it work in other places if the city feels...
Even if it was over a row, you know, along the very edge of the property, it would seem to be a little more than sort of out in the middle of the parking lot.
Sure.
And I guess I would rather have it be close to where you need to rent them from, but as far off to the edge as is practical unless you're taking away parking that's very close for customers. It doesn't look like it would be over there, but, you know, perhaps I'm wrong about that. But I would like to see it off to the side a bit more, but yet reasonable, somewhere in there, reasonable for whatever your staff is.
Or in the area I just circled, then?
Something like that, perhaps.
Sure. No, certainly, that's more than agreeable for us.
Okay. Councilmember Case.
If that was a sticking point, I would concur that that's okay. I spend half of my adult life probably at Home Depot and the other half at Menards, to be fair. So I've been there a lot, and I, that area of the parking lot is not used much. I mean, actually, where you've got it exactly pegged, I think, makes sense, especially if trucks are pulling in from either side, which if they are, I mean, I would really, again, if it was a sticking point, that's fine, I can go along with anything. But I would defer to the planning of the Home Depot experts in that, especially because if you're standing in the parking lot, that hill is high behind you, so it's kind of already, you know, mixing in with whatever's there. And even when I sometimes pull in off the red line trail there, what I'm looking, is everybody looking? I'm not sure what others are looking. I guess not while I'm looking at it. When I pull in, you know, and you cut across, there's just no cars there. And you kind of have it in a good spot, but again, it's not that big a deal.
I'll admit to being a more occasional user. And so, you know, I would defer to if you think that really is the least...
Obstruction.
Obstructionist place to have them, that I could live with that. I always assume over near the edge is the least physical.
The only consideration I might add to that is, as the council member said, is the trucks are being rented, they're not being driven by drivers who typically drive trucks, so if we can give them a little more room to get in and out, it's usually better for everybody. But we've done them in... But we've done them in, in rows like the one we circled before without incident that I'm aware of.
Any other questions? Mr. Aho.
I spend a lot of time there as well, and it's really close to my house, so it's convenient. But anyway, I guess I would just direct that, that staff work with, work with the proponent to find the, find the best location, both from a perspective of safety and also from a perspective of sight lines from, from Valley View. So I think, you know, rather than us trying to nitpick it here and plan it in committee, I think I would rather see staff, staff work with you to find an acceptable location.
Any other questions?
I have a question for staff, perhaps. I thought when I was reading through these materials, I saw something that said, something regarding landscaping, what they were going to do, but then other places I'm seeing, existing landscaping along Valley View will treat, screen the truck rental area. And I didn't see a landscape plan with this. Is there one included?
We did not include one, no.
Okay. Well, I kind of have some problems with the screening here. This addition to the garden area comes a lot closer to the road than the current garden area, and the screening that's along Valley View there is really pretty minimal. It needs to be fleshed out. It's not doing, it's not really screening much of anything right now. And I think that's true all along the line of Valley View. So I still do have a problem with where that parking is. I think it's way too visible. When you look at other places in town that are renting trucks and the kinds of screening that they have, or the distance that their trucks are from the road, it's much different. A to Z Rental has truck rental. Their trucks are not only behind A to Z Rental, but they're within an enclosure, and the enclosure is screened. Menards has some trucks. I went by there today. The trucks are right up by the front door, so as you walk into Menards, you see them. These trucks are available to rent. They're not stuck out by the road that people are driving on through our community to see this big truck rental area. I mean, we're not budget rent a truck or whatever, and I really don't want to be seeing these trucks from Valley View Road personally. I don't think it looks really good. And I don't think the amount of screening that's on Valley View now is going to be sufficient to screen it. So I have some big concerns about that. I'm also concerned about the fact that only 82 people were noticed on this. I know there aren't a whole lot of houses on it along this, but there are an awful lot of people that drive along this road every day that I think would have something to say about some of these issues. Also, we got a nice letter from a nearby resident that is concerned about noise, and I am very concerned about that, too. Loudspeaker noise, music noise that reflects back to their homes. You know, this, this Home Depot really isn't in a normal place that a lot of Home Depots are. A lot of times, you see them along the sides of a freeway. There aren't residential neighborhoods nearby. Home Depot went in here backing up to residential communities, and noise should be something that's really taken into account by, by Home Depot. And so I'm very concerned about adding on more outdoor space, which is going to mean more noise for those nearby residents. So those are some of my concerns.
Home Depot is concerned about being a good neighbor, and we saw the letter, and we're talking with staff there regarding the speakers and the fact phones going off in the middle of the night. That should not be happening, and we'll rectify that, certainly. As far as more noise from the expansion, it's really the same product and the same movement, it's just more of the product. So I don't think it would increase the number of pages and things like that.
But if you have more product, you have more people coming in, you have more sales, you have more people talking to people in the back lot, and, I mean, I think, I can understand the concern of the neighbor, because I think it will increase the noise.
But we're absolutely committed to being a good neighbor and working, you know, with, with staff to limit that noise and to give assurances that will limit the noise. Like, like I said, the middle-of-the-night stuff should not be happening, the noise should not occur at all at that time.
And another question I have for staff, you talk about, in our materials, about the percentage of outdoor show space, or I can't remember what the terminology is. Does that include things like putting out barbecue grills for 200 feet? I mean, that they, space that they normally use seasonally to sell, does that include that, or does it only include the outdoor garden center?
Your honor, councilmembers, it does include all of the outdoor storage and display, including those smaller items that you mentioned.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on the Home Depot expansion? Okay, if you would come up to give your name and address for the record.
I need a microphone.
Oh, yeah, microphone issue.
Do you have an extra one? I thought we had that here. It didn't work.
Oh, it didn't work.
So we're going to get those fixed by the next meeting?
Yeah, it just happened, so.
Thank you, Lauren.
Good evening. My name is Eileen Jumbek, and I live at 13396 Zenith Lane, and I'm kind of directly to the west of Home Depot. My concerns are exactly, as you said, the noise. You expand the garden area, you have more trucks going beep, 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 beep at all hours of the night. When I first moved to my little location, my little paradise, I used to call it, about almost 25 years ago, when I opened up my garage door, the first thing I would hear would be the birds and the Cardinals singing, all that kind of stuff. Now, the first time, first thing I hear when that garage door goes open is, "Can I pick up a long nine?" I mean, just, I mean, it's gotten a little bit better. Now, I think they wear headsets, so now sometimes I'll just hear the phone ring once or twice, and maybe they pick it up, but, you know, I, I don't sleep well, so I tend to sit out in my yard for a little while at night, sometimes till two or three o'clock in the morning, and they'll be out there backing up, moving things. If you, if you increase that garden center area, they're going to have more supplies, more unpacking, more hours are going to need to do that, the more noise you're going to hear back there with the beep, beep, beep. I just, you know, and the music playing, there's nothing worse than trying to meditate, and you hear, it's a Rocky Mountain High somewhere, I mean, really kind of just disturbs my meditation. But, and as far as the trucks go, my question there was, how big are these trucks? You're talking about novices driving them. What kind of noise is that going to make? I mean, I don't know if they're automatic, if they're stick, or what, whatever they are, but you move them closer to the west side, that's where most of us on Valley View live. I'm literally towards the front part of that, so I hear all that backup noise behind the scenes and the, and the garden center noise now. So, you know, it's really been a bad distraction and may have not been good neighbors. I've actually gone over to Home Depot on a number of occasions. One thing they did do for me, they did turn the spotlight out at 10 o'clock or something, so at least the birds can get some sleep. But it's not been a good situation. I mean, you know, they're out there at two or three o'clock in the morning doing whatever they do, and I don't think that should be allowed. So the expansion, to me, is not a good thing. Neither are the trucks. There's, I think there's more room on the east side of the parking lot where they might be able to park them, but again, I don't even know what kind of, and they even said that there were never going to be any long-term overnight, over-the-road tractors parked there. There are. I mean, you know, and sometimes they're left running, and you can hear them at night. So it was a residential area, and it's too bad it didn't stay that way, so that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the audience that wants to address the council? Please come up.
Hi. I'm Tom Trimsley. I live on 16450 Valley Road, and the noise, I'm more concerned with the loud motorcycles, especially Harley-Davidsons. I can hear them plain as day, and I'm off the road quite a ways. It just seems like there's no enforcement on the bells. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Counsel, or Kathy, you have a question.
Well, yeah, I was not aware that they were playing music outside for outdoor, you know, or having broadcasts from a speaker system out there. That does concern me. Outdoor storage is one thing. Having it outdoor where people can go find their Christmas tree or their barbecue is fine, but I had not envisioned that there would be any outside music or any outside speakers or anything like that. And if that's the case, I'm much less interested in expanding it. If, I would be interested in expanding it if all the music and all the loudspeaker stuff went away, period, because that's the way it should be. Usually, outdoor storage means just that, storage, and not outdoor noise. So I am upset to hear that this is happening, period, and can't say that I'm real interested in expanding it unless it all, all the bad stuff goes away. And I don't know that we can make a decision on that tonight.
Yes. Do you want to come up and use the podium now, please?
Again, Home Depot is committed to being a good neighbor. I understand, you know, there are times when things don't go so well, and if we're disturbing people, we don't want to. We're, at other stores, we've limited hours where, you know, certain things can happen. Outdoor intercoms and music and things like that in the middle of the night absolutely shouldn't happen, and at different stores, we've limited the hours of that kind of stuff between like, usually, they start deliveries and start working at six in the morning because they have to get things ready for the day, and we've stopped those kinds of operations at 10 o'clock at night. So we're certainly open to doing, you know, something of that nature, which would be acceptable to, to council and to the neighbors.
But I'm not sure music should ever be out there. That's not the intent for outdoor storage. You know, in-store music shouldn't be outside. You know, if you're going to have any announcements or getting ahold of employees, they should have little, you know, beeper-type things or buzzers, you know, or on their, some kind of a cellphone or something. There's lots of ways to communicate with people other than, and overhead mic system that can be heard, you know, ways away, and perhaps more effectively even done just through some kind of, something they wear on their belt. So to my mind, there should never be that outside, you know. Six to 10 would be much better than if you're supplying that kind of stuff at two in the morning. I totally agree with that. But I don't see ever a time where there should be, the music you might have indoor for white noise or something doesn't belong outside.
I agree, and I think that's something we could absolutely do, is to eliminate the music, you know, period, and just leave it to the...
And the broadcasts, you know, and get your employees some little more modern communication technology.
I'll have to talk, I mean, that's an operational thing I'm not totally privy to, but I, we could certainly talk to them and then work with staff about, you know, coming to an acceptable method.
Okay. Councilmember Aho.
I know the staff I've seen at, at Home Depot do carry little, little communication devices with them. I'm sure they could use those. So what I would like to do is just make sure that we, we limit that, and so I think staff understands what our direction is, that we don't want to have overhead paging, we don't have music outdoors, especially after, after normal business hours, especially.
During normal business hours.
Or during normal business hours. So I think we should just direct staff to work this out with, with Home Depot and make sure that this is not going on so that we are not disturbing the neighbors. And I think, you know, rather than us trying to set the hours here again tonight, let's, let's let staff work through that detail with, with Home Depot.
Councilmember Butcher.
Right. I really appreciate hearing a couple of these things. I had read the letter, but I, I wasn't aware of that noise level. So I agree with you, we have to do something about that. Were we going to look any further at the, where the trucks are parked?
It's a big concern of mine, as well as landscaping and screening. I just see no screening for the location of the trucks now, and I see insufficient screening along Valley View Road to do the job of covering up the fact that this garden center has been expanded towards the road, and these trucks are going to be sitting there. I would really like to see the trucks behind some kind of fence or totally screened. I mean, we're not Rite or Rents Trucks.
Does she have something to say?
Yes, Mr. Russell.
Just to add a short little conference with Ms. Jeremiah, you do have until January 13th on the review period for this, and this is a matter that staff hasn't had an opportunity to discuss with them. The entire requ, I mean, the staff report says the request is planned unit district review with waivers, and the waiver is the entire expansion. There was an original approval of Home Depot in '98 with a waiver for more outdoor storage than would otherwise be allowed. Now, this is in addition to that, so the entire request is a waiver. So I think staff would appreciate an opportunity to have the discussions that you're asking them to have before you do the first reading approval, and then bring that back after agreement and working it out so you can see the details, so you have a level of comfort with that.
That sounds good.
And I think the additional comment, Mayor and Council, too, is when we look at the letter, that I think it states that there are concerns within that neighborhood with noise, but it had not been brought forward before. So this is the first time through this letter it was brought forward to the city. Obviously, those issues are up to and through today, and they're not necessarily about the expansion. There are concern that exists right now, so obviously, I think we want to deal with that now, as you're saying, and with the expansion as well.
So would we not vote on this, and we just send it back to staff?
Yes, continue it to the next meeting.
November 20.
Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion to continue?
I, yeah, I'll be more than happy to make the motion.
Mr. Kisho.
Well, before we make a motion, just, just so that staff is completely confused, so that, so that you're hearing, I guess I don't necessarily, you can disagree, in fact, that's what I want to communicate. I want to communicate that there's a little bit of disagreement up here still at the council level. I think we're all very in agreement that we want to mitigate any impacts negatively on neighbors, and so I like very much the prohibition, maybe on music at all times. I think that's accurate. I have it pulled up on Google Maps, and there's about a football field of trees between the closest house on the west side, but nonetheless, if they're hearing noise impacts, that's significant. But we, it wasn't like, I think we were, and by the way, three of us were on the council when we approved this, it wasn't like we were stupid putting this into a residential area. We had, we had more of a buffer than many areas in this whole city, and there's all kinds of areas in the city that have negative impacts of commercial, and we wanted to bring commercial in. This is part of our major center area, so this, I don't think we should jump so fast to condemn the fact that this is here. I think we need to mitigate as much as we can the negative impacts, and particularly if we get our hands on the chance to do that, which we have tonight, then let's deal with the music piece. But I want, I want to say again, I'm not concerned with the trucks being out there. These are rental trucks. I'm assuming they're the pickup trucks like Menards has, or they're, they're not the huge massive 16-wheelers, they're...
No, no. They're, they're from vans to, I think it's 22 or 24-foot trucks.
Yeah, I know, but my point is, Menards has several out front, and not just out front for advertisement, but they actually have them out the parking lot sometimes. It's just, it, I think it's a service, number one, for our people that I think is legitimate, and to push it off next to, I don't know what that hill is, a 50 to 60-foot hill, where it is, you know, I mean, where they have it slated to be is not a bad spot, is my point, if you drive out there very much. So I guess I want staff just to hear, yeah, go back and mess with it, deal with it. You're getting, I hope, some multiple, you know, thoughts out here, and come back and bring us the best, you know, you can. But I just wanted to make sure that, 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 I don't think there's consensus on whether the trucks should go there or not. I think they should, exactly where they're, they were originally slated, but if you can find a better spot, go for it. And I don't even mind the garden center area being there, particularly if we make it even better, we mitigate some of the current sound, and we make it better. The space itself is not negatively impacting neighbors to the west, because there's 300 feet of trees to the west. I mean, it's not like there's a house sitting right there that's going to see this, they're not. So it's the sound issue I'm really hearing that I'm most concerned with, too. Let's, let's grab this as an advantage time to mitigate that, but, but I'm not opposed at all to the expansion here of the, of the outdoor center.
We're, again, absolutely, you know, open to and willing to work through this in any way, and in different cities, you know, we've added landscaping, like I was out there before I came here, and I understand what the mayor's speaking of regarding... there before I came here, and I understand what the mayor's speaking of regarding Front Valley View Road. There's some openings in there. At other places, we've added trees to kind of fill in here and there at that point. We've, we've moved them to different places on the site. We want to get them in the best place. We, Home Depot truly isn't looking to have them as, as billboards. They really, most of the renting goes on online, and people reserve them online and then come in and do it. And they're coming and going from different areas of the country typically. Regarding the garden center and the noise, again, we're happy, we want to work with staff. We want to be good neighbors. You're absolutely right. I don't know why music is being played 24/7. It shouldn't. It should be an in-store thing, not an out-of-store thing. Our, our concern is, I know staff had some concerns about the seasonal sales, and I, my understanding's an ongoing thing to have it screened. And for us to do that and get it done and be ready for the spring, we do have a little bit of time sensitivity as far as being able to build it by then. That, that's my biggest concern here with, depending on how long this goes.
One of my concerns is, in the planning commission meeting minutes, it indicates discussion about screening and adding trees to the area. But yet, in the information we've gotten from the opponent and from the staff report, I see no, nothing saying, here's where trees are going to grow, and this is how big they're going to be, and it'll screen sufficiently. There's nothing. So, I'm really concerned about that.
It may, my only recollection of the trees is that in the, in the islands that we're doing in front of the garden center expansion, there were trees in the islands that would be coming out, and we would put trees in the islands that would be going in.
So, you'd just be replacing ones that are currently there?
Yes.
Well, the planning commission meeting minutes say something differently. They will also be adding more trees to the area. So, I'm wondering if they got different information than we got.
We need more information.
We need more information.
I think we might be talking about two different areas as well. We're, we're, we're mixing the garden center expansion with the trucks area, and so, you know, maybe...
Right. But I don't see anything about more trees anywhere.
Right. I think you could put more trees, like where that Nert Pond is in front on boundary of Valley View. You could put, you could put more screening along, along there, landscape screening along there.
And I think also right around where the, wherever the trucks are going to be, there should be more screening.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I'm saying right on this, if you look at that Nert Pond right there.
Oh, I'm saying, in the parking lot.
I'd also suggest that if they're making more garden center, that, that in itself talks about plantings and things you can do with plantings, and things you would like to have people buy from you, that you might be able to both have some interesting landscaping using your own materials that could be double-duty for extra landscaping, extra garden, and still good for business.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about the whole truck thing. I mean, I, I know what A to Z Rental does, and I, I think that's great. I mean, we have a potential that Eden Prairie Shopping Center might decide that they want to have Penske trucks available for rent there, and they'll put a bunch of them out in the middle of their parking lot. Or down by Jerry's Super Value, they might want to stick a bunch of trucks out in the front of their parking lot for rental. And, you know, I don't know that that's what we want in our community. I would feel much better if these were screened, if they were off to the side and not so visible, particularly not so visible from Valley View Road. So...
Councilmember Aho? I'm not sure who had the light next. Okay. Councilmember Nelson, are you done?
No, just unless you're ready for a motion.
No, go ahead.
I'd like...
Did you make it, Kathy?
Not yet.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I'm kind of taking the chance with that, because there are homes, they can see Home Depot, you come to where I live. I can see Home Depot from where I live. So, yeah, there may be a lot of trees. That hill used to be a lot bigger. Towards the front, there's a hill there, but there is not in the back. So, you know, step in my shoes. And the trees that they did plant originally, go look at them. Eighty percent of them are dead. And, you know, and the people who live, I live on the lower level, so the people who live up above really hear even more sometimes than I do, because I'm right at the end where the, where the pond is. I mean, that whole backyard is, I can see it, the lights are on, and so...
All right, thank you. And that is another thing that we should be addressing as part of this. What is the status of current landscaping?
Absolutely.
In light.
In light. Yeah. Good. Councilmember Nelson, do you want to make a motion?
I'd like to move to continue this public hearing to the next meeting, November, whatever the date is.
20th, I think.
20th. And, and in the meantime, have staff work with proponents for placement of the trucks and noise issues outside that should go, probably go away. And many of the things we've talked about here, some more landscaping and consideration of the truck placement behind landscaping and such. And even if there is any landscaping issues that were there originally that no longer are, to take all of that into consideration, I assume that something can become together that will satisfy everybody ultimately, but some work needs to be done.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Brings us to our third public hearing, which is Metropolitan Airport Commission Development Sites. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a request for a text amendment to the city's comprehensive guide plan, and also a text amendment to the, the city's zoning, city code zoning ordinance relating to airport office and airport commercial districts. And I know that our planning commission has had two consecutive meetings related to this issue, and this is a, kind of the beginning of a, a long, three-step process related to potential commercial development by MAC of their property. So, somewhat as the project proponent on the city's part, our city planner, who's spent a lot of time on this issue, could give a brief overview. And then, we also have a MAC here as well to answer questions along with city staff.
Okay. Thank you.
May I, can you go to the podium?
Yes, please.
Yes, so we can hear you.
I have to move out. I'll mess it up. Your honor and members of the city council, I'd like to talk about the three-part process and what actions the council would be considering at each step of the way. What's going on this evening is the council is going to take an action to establish the regulatory tools. And these tools are very important, because these are going to be the measures by which we will judge the merits of the rezoning of each of the six parcels, and the merits of the site plan review, which would occur subsequent to any council action on this process. As part of the action tonight, we're creating the airport office and airport commercial district. The standards for these districts are identical to the commercial and office standards. So, you take a look at the most recent commercial and office developments, the best of the best we have in town. These are the standards that are going to be applicable to this part. We're going to carry this just a step further. We've done a little national research on convenience gas stations and guidelines, because there is potential for convenience gas to be adjacent to Pioneer Trail or across the street from residential. We feel some additional mitigation measures are necessary. First, we believe it's important to establish a residential character, so it doesn't look like a gas station. The other thing we want to do is to have the best part of the building towards the intersection or facing the residential areas, and have the canopies behind. So, you don't see people at the pump islands, you don't see the cars, you don't see the lights. The third part is lowering the light standards at the pump. See, for out at a typical pump or gas station, it's normally 100-foot candles. Our proposal is 10-foot candles. That is adequate enough to provide for safety, to be able to actually read the dispensers and to put gas into your car. And it's going to be not so bright that if you're out at nighttime in your backyard, you won't see this glow. And then, we have some additional architectural quality standards and some additional landscaping standards. These standards really should be in our commercial districts anyways. So, at some point next year, when we have some spare time, we'll bring that in front of the council. When we get to the rezoning stage, we're going to take a look at where's the best place to put the building. And one of the critical things we're going to take a look at is transition. Because for our commercial, office, industrial, and multiple family districts, a transition is required by city code whenever there's a difference in land use. And we're going to have commercial next to residential, office next to residential. And our code defines in site plan and architectural review what transition is. It can be a smaller building, it can be shorter buildings, it can be fewer buildings, it can be bigger setbacks, it can be a large berm with a lot of trees. It could be the preservation of trees that are out on the property now. It could be the wetland area. Any number of those things would be appropriate depending upon the site and its location. So, that's going to be really important at that point for the commission, the council, the neighbor to be involved with MAC and look at where's the best placement for the building on the property that needs that transition. When you get to the site plan stage, hopefully, the big picture question about should there be building or old building, or where it should be, is taken care of. And we take a look at all the specific details that you look at with any commercial and office development. So, at that point, the project is probably 70% design, almost to a building permit stage. So, we will look at the architecture, the landscaping, the screening, the stormwater runoff, the rainwater gardens, the infiltration basin, the impact on sewer and water and streets, all those normal things we typically agree, and will happen at the site plan stage. So, another item that's on the agenda tonight is the resolution for the guide plan change. And the city council cannot take a final action on the zoning until the MAC council has taken action on the guide plan change, which is one of the reasons we have a letter from MAC extending the 120-day review period until January 17, 2013. That would give the MAC council up to 20 days, 120 days to take their action, and still give us time to come back if we get to that point, to do the second reading for the adoption of the rules and regulations before the clock would run out. So, that's kind of my three-and-a-half-minute version of a 45-minute presentation we give to the planning commission.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'll stick around and answer questions.
Yep. Thank you. Good explanation.
Yeah.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Franson? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to address the council on this issue? Come on up to the podium and give your name and address for the record, please. The gentleman first, and then, woman in blue, did you want to speak? Oh, was there anybody else? Okay. Then you'll be second. Thank you.
John Fedora, 9820 Tree Farm Road. I believe the, thank you for this opportunity. I believe the council has a document that was presented by the neighbors of the Tree Farm Road area and the North Bluff neighborhoods. And kind of the, the short answer is, this process is going to go a lot more, easier for everybody if we remove what's been identified as parcel six from consideration. I think I've articulated many issues regarding parcel six as far as lack of access, lack of visibility, extreme terrain, requirement for tree replacement, wetland on the parcel, a need for buffer against residential, the destruction of wildlife habitat, and a stormwater culvert that goes currently through the middle of that property. It's just, it just doesn't make any sense why this is included. It seems to me that the MAC did not do any due diligence when they put this on the plot. They looked at maps and said, oh, that's a big parcel, we can use that. They didn't know about the wetland. They didn't know about the stormwater culvert. They didn't consider any property setbacks. And just looking at an aerial map does not give a clear picture of the extreme terrain there. There's huge hills, a valley, and another huge hill. And it, it just doesn't make any sense to even consider developing there. And I've gone into quite a bit of detail, I believe you do have the document. In addition, I do have a petition signed by many of our neighbors, asking you to remove parcel six from consideration. And kind of on a, you know, laid out a logical response, but kind of on an emotional level, too, is that, you know, many of us have been there for 20 years. And we've made that calculation. We knew there was an airport there. We, we knew there was a dump there. But we made that calculation and said, we have a promise of no building behind us. We can live with that. And the airport has been a good neighbor, and we haven't complained through all the, you know, all the hubbub with the airport. And, you know, it, it's a major factor in our quality of life here. And, you know, if you take action that says, yeah, let's include parcel six, and we'll figure it out later, immediately, our property values go down. Because right now, we can say, you know what? No one can build behind us. This is a de facto nature preserve. We have deer, fox, coyotes, rabbits, you, you name it, it's there. And it, and from a commercial standpoint, it makes no sense. So, before you move forward with anything on this, you know, just take parcel six off, off the table, and, you know, blessings to it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fedora. If you want to give that petition to the recorder, that would be great.
Great, Jeff.
Okay, next. Did you wish to address us? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Council, my name's Jeff Shane Wetter. We've built a few homes in this immediate area, and I'm embarrassed to say I don't know which section is section six. So, if we could answer that question, I may be speaking about the same section.
Okay. I'm sure we are.
East of the airport.
Yeah.
It's east, east of the airport, south of Pioneer Trail.
I'm sorry, I'm going to talk about a different section.
Okay.
Thank you. MAC is a good neighbor, and has been a great neighbor. And I'm here tonight representing many neighbors that live on Sky Lane, have made significant investments for their family and their households. And I think we need to recognize that MAC is now a developer. They're not an airport. And while we've had a solid working relationship with MAC, tonight, they're before you, asking for an indication as to a change in the guide plan. If I came to you tonight as a developer and said, hey, I'd like to change the guide plan, you would say, well, Jeff, that's a nice idea, and you've asked me these questions before, so I've been in their position. And you say, tell me what you're going to build. Can you show me some plans? Because we understand that we represent the citizens of Eden Prairie, and we count on you to enforce the guide plan. And the guide plan west of Spring Road, west of Eden Prairie Road, is residential, R1, not office. And tonight, any other developer would have to show you a plan, a specific plan. And you would contemplate changing the guide plan, perhaps changing the zoning, and perhaps doing something different for that developer. I'm here tonight to say, I can't support a future office use on what is surrounded by R1. And I'm all for open space or rural being turned into residential. So, I'm pro-development. Shocking. But, as I speak to you tonight, I can assure you that there are millions of dollars of tax base that don't want to see anything else than more residential. And I think MAC has every right to develop their property. And as a developer, they have a right to utilize their property. But it needs to be consistent with the guide plan. Special zoning districts, office, I can't support that. And my neighborhood expects you not to support that. We do support more residential development. That's what the guide plan shows. That's res, that's rational. So, you know, the land that represents the westerlymost portion of this application, and I think Brad's familiar with this, the westerlymost portion was not MAC land originally. It was acquired by MAC. And if they acquire some more land, do they get to have special treatment as a developer by manifest destiny? So, as we expand the boundaries of the airport, does that expand a special zoning district? And how much more land can we buy? And how much more land can we buy and get special treatment? Because I want to be special too. So tonight I expect MAC to play by the same rules I have to play by. They need to tell you and show you and disclose to you what they're going to do. And then they should be allowed to develop their property. But the property on the west end needs to be residential because that's consistent with the other uses that surround it, literally three hundred and sixty degrees. We don't want a spot zone, we don't want office, and it's inappropriate. MAC has not contacted any of the neighborhood residents, there's been no grassroots effort to have this discussion. And when I come in for a plat, the first thing your staff does, says, Jeff, have you gone out and talked to the neighbors? And I, I know what that's about. So I'm here to ask you tonight to approve convenience gas up by the ballfields, that's a good idea. I would go there myself, I would love to have a convenience gas station close to my home, that would be a good thing. I'm asking you to be consistent with the guide plan on the west end of this site, and it needs to be residential. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, if you'd like to come up.
Hi, Brian Reed, one zero 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 nine Kirsten Place. I'm on the east end of parcel six, so I live at the, the top of the hill, and I look over basically parcel six. And I, I just want to echo everything these people said and, and really what he's saying with respect to the guide plan. When I moved, bought the house two years ago, I reconciled with fact that I'm going to have airplanes right over my house, and I, and I have a twenty-year-old landfill. But I was able to move into this knowing that there was land behind the house that would never be developed because it's crash zone, or whatever it's called. So this is a new development, I agree, it probably brings our property values down significantly. And I, I really just want to echo, this is the first time we've heard discussion on the, on the west end, so I thought it would be a good conversation to say, take parcel six out, but it really looks like you're dealing with the office, not the commercial here, so that's it.
Thank you.
David Anderson, one five five one zero, Crocus Lane. My question would be having to do with parcel three and four as far as the size. I don't know exactly the acreage on both of them, but they appear to be about the same. And my only question was, and I know that people on Starling Lane, if there are any here, probably wouldn't be too happy with my suggestion, but if there is a proposed holiday station for the corner on parcel three, that four looks to me like it would have less impact on residential. Before Pulte's development went in, it probably would be about the same, but now you have homes also on that corner, also. Just a, just a thought, I live right across from it, I, I'll live with it if, if it goes through. I, I personally don't think that, that anybody would make the investment for that because of the access. To me, it just doesn't cash flow, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Anyone else, did I see another, couple more hands, okay, come on up.
Good evening. Your Honor, Council. My name is Jim Duncan, I have a building by number seven, and I'm concerned about what that is there, or what they want to put there, the zone, I mean, they're looking like commercial airport. So I assume it's an office building, I own an office building behind it. And I can't see that there's enough room there for a building, but I also can't see how they, the access. I don't believe you could get in there from Pioneer and out. Maybe you could, or you could maybe come through my door, and I don't think that'll work either. So I'm, that's what I'm concerned about, and number five, I think, is in front of the holiday station there. So, or the Super America, I guess it is. So I'm not, you know, I'm not concerned about that, but I do have a concern about the traffic and the access to the number seven and what they intend to put there, there's very limited property there. I think there are gardens there right now, so if you put a, a building up, it's got to be pretty small if you want to have some parking.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The gentleman in back row, yes.
Good evening, I'm Jack Lanigan, ninety-seven fifty-two, Coupola Lane. I just have a couple of questions. My one question I do have is for the attorney, I believe you were at the planning commission meeting. And you made a statement that MAC can do whatever they want to do, that even if we object to anything they want to do, that since it's the government, they can go ahead and do it. Are we wasting our time, is this futile time that we're spending here?
Do you want me to answer at this point? That's not exactly what I said.
Yes, it is. I remember, I, I.
Okay, it's not taped?
I'm getting old, but my mind is still good.
I'm getting old too, but I know that's.
I'm older than you are.
I know, uh, I know that's not exactly what I said. And, and I'm fully prepared tonight to talk about what I said and would repeat that if the council wanted me to talk about that.
Just briefly.
Briefly.
I want to know where we stand.
Briefly, MAC takes the position they don't have to listen to the city. Briefly, I take the position that with respect to this property, they do have to listen to the city. Briefly, to avoid a large dispute and litigation over whether they're right or I'm right, this was a compromise worked out with MAC as to how they would go through our process. Because their original proposal was that they would hold a public meeting, not a public hearing like this. They would take input, they would present, they would then design what they wanted to do, and they would essentially let the city know. So the city would not have the kind of input the council potentially has with respect to all of this development through this process. So that's what I said the evening of the planning commission, I believe.
But they don't have to listen. Correct, the government does not.
Again, that's not what I said, sir.
I'm not, I'm asking you, does the government have to listen to us?
It is my position that MAC has to follow the city's rules with respect to development of non- aeronautical sites. It is MAC's position that they do not have to listen to or follow the city's rules with respect to the development of these sites.
Okay, thank you, that's, I wanted to know that, appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Franzine, this one, I believe it is number three. Does that, that's four point five acres, is that just that vacant land right now, or does that include the soccer fields, that four point five acres?
That's the vacant property outside of the soccer fields.
Just that little square, it's four point five acres. Okay, thank you. Also, we were told when we moved into the area, which we knew the airport was there, we were told, were told that there would never be anything built on section two. Now we're going to put a commercial building up. MAC also owns land, it's very close to the creek, I don't want to go through that again, that we went through in Hennepin Village. And that's exactly what's going to happen. That is hilly, they're going to tear the hills down, I don't know where they're going to put the buildings. There's talk of them, if they need another exit, which it should go to Eden Prairie Road, I hope they don't put it to prospect. They're talking about using possibly the road that they have now, that's sort of a dirt road that goes up where the lights are for the, uh, when the planes come in. I just, I just don't know where they're going to put a building in there, I really don't, without, the other thing is, it's such beautiful land. I mean, you, you've already decimated that area out there. It's fortunate that toll come in, that we have the single-family homes now, that's been a very big benefit for all of us. But I hope that you just don't let that land just go, you know, just let it go in there and just level it. So, because it seems like, you know, you know, I have one other question, do they pay taxes? Does, does, does MAC pay taxes?
No.
Okay, then in other words, they could go ahead, rather than develop these lands themselves, they could lease this land out ninety-nine years, have someone else develop it. If, if they do that, does that developer pay taxes?
There, there is a payment of personal property tax that is in lieu of, of real property tax that is equivalent to the prop, real property tax, yes.
Thank you for answering my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Council members, discussion, questions? Council member case.
I think I learned a little bit more clarity in your comments there on Mr. Russo. I've often told people that ultimately MAC had the final authority to do what they wanted. I understand a little bit more from you tonight, that is their perception. And that by us agreeing to go into agreement on a joint zoning commission, that it's our perception that we need to be listened to, is that, is that accurate as much as I? I don't want to put words in your mouth, I mean, I'm just trying to understand for me.
With a, with a clarification, when you say joint zoning commission, this has nothing to do with the JASB board. But it is their position that they have authority to develop their property without our input or approval.
And is there case law, I mean, I would guess around the state, we have all these relievers, is there not case law that supports one side or the other?
Uh, there is an attorney general's opinion from nineteen ninety-two addressed to my partner, Mr. Pauli, who was city attorney, who asked the question whether the city could enforce its zoning regulations with respect to the airport. And the attorney general said the test is a balancing of interests test, and given the broad authority that MAC has to develop and operate its airports, that we could not impose our zoning authority on the airport. I've read that opinion very carefully, and it's my opinion that that attorney general opinion from ninety-two does not address non- aeronautical uses. It addresses that the entire purpose for the chapter that gives MAC such broad authority is to run our transportation system. And so we cannot interfere with or zone or regulate the aeronautical operations at the airport.
So we would have to be prepared to go to court?
Yes, we would.
You know, I, I never, I, I think I've got, I think I have consistent votes against us participating in the joint zoning commission, I think it's come up twice if I'm remembering correctly. And my, my thoughts all along have been, I, I, I feel like MAC is hiding behind us. I mean, that they possibly could come in with their zoning ideas and they need cover. And that we, my feeling for the last couple of years has been that we gain very, very little, but we potentially lose a lot because then we get blamed, basically, they get to do a lot of what they want to do anyway. And then they hide behind the fact that we kind of, you know, put a stamp of approval on it, and that's always been irritating. The other side to that, which I do understand, and I've been weighing in my own mind about the role that we might play, is that we do lose all leverage then. I mean, at least they have agreed so far to meet the building code requirements that we have in our city, which they seemingly, according to their perception, don't have to. And positioning, I am concerned about the, the gas station, I'm concerned about actually every single situation that was brought up tonight I'm concerned about. But just to use the gas station as an example, I, I would be, maybe we don't want it there, maybe we do, but they do, or let's say they do. And if they were to place a gas station there and we had no control whatsoever, and they placed it facing the, you know, houses across the corner, and they didn't care about the downcast lights because they didn't meet our zoning code, that, that's a huge concern. So I've, even though I've voted against it twice, I've bought in at least a little bit to the argument that the rest of the council members use, that we, we would lose our leverage if we didn't sit down at the table. We, basically, we got a, a seat at the table, we may not get a voting seat at the table, but we got a seat at the table. I, I've often been asked, well, you know, why not just throw up our hands because MAC is going to do whatever they're going to want anyway? And the answer back a little bit is that we, we at least have the political leverage because MAC is a political agency, they're appointed by the governor, and so we've always had this, this political piece of us sitting at the table that gives us an empowered seat, and we used that back in the two thousand and one negotiating settlement with MAC. We, in essence, had very, very little control whatsoever if they wanted to expand the runway. But out of that, allowing them to do that without political blowback, we got depth, you know, assurance forever that the, the depth of the pavement will not exceed a certain amount, and we got no scheduled service, so we got something. So there's political leverage tonight in, in this. I, I still am not convinced that, um, we shouldn't make some kind of a statement and, and vote against this tonight simply because I'm not happy with, in a way, them coming to us tonight saying, just give us approval just to go do what we're going to do, and thank you so much. Because we are, even though tonight we're not really approving much at all, except for the basic definitions. And so, but, but that does leave the next step open for, could office go into, um, this, this, they're not sections, what are we calling them? Parcel, parcel six. I'd like to make a statement tonight, I don't think office or, I'm not sure anything should go into parcel, parcel six, but definitely not office. I don't think office should go into parcel two, I don't know about the four and seven, but I don't think we're going to get a lot of say in that. And so by participating tonight, are we basically giving some kind of a nod of approval that, well, we know you're going to do what you're going to do, so go and do it, and we'll give you some kind of a stamp of approval? So I'm not comfortable really voting on this tonight, even though I realize I have to say that to everybody in the community that, that we are losing a little bit of the seat at the table, if, if indeed we were all to vote against this tonight. I, I guess I'm willing to trade that a little bit for right now for us to make a statement.
Is this a take all or take none situation? Because I'll admit, I'm more comfortable with the commercial than I am with the office. But if it's, you have to take it all or you have to take none, I would at least want to know, is that the situation?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I, I haven't discussed that with MAC, and their representatives are, are here. Let me just revisit a little bit the process. Tonight, it's approval of the language, and it's not approval of any rezoning or any commercial use or any office use on any of these parcels. It sets up the mechanism that would then allow them to come back at a new public hearing before both the planning commission and the council to request the actual rezoning of those parcels.
Could I ask you, interrupt and ask you a question? So it's just giving the definitions, we could be doing with what we're doing tonight without even talking about, there's this parcel called number two that has this shape and is this size. This has nothing to do with the specific parcels or their size or shape?
That's correct, we're putting into place those definitions and zones in the code but without any parcels attached to them. That's coming, that's the next step, when they would apply and make an application to rezone these parcels that are on the map to the zones that are shown in the draft ordinance that we've presented, office and, and, and commercial. And at, at that point, then, they will have, they have told us, they will have more detail about what might be on there, but it's not going to be, as Mr. Schoenwetter requests and as he's required to do, it's not going to be the detailed kinds of plans. That would come at the third step when there was site approval. Now, the reason for that was, it was a compromise. They're giving up their position that they don't have to go through this and listen to comments and take in input and perhaps modify their positions based, in order to get your approval. And what we gave up was something that, as I've described before, we have not done before, rezone property without the exact details. Many communities do that, we stand fairly unusual in that regard, and, and you, we have a fairly unusual and beautiful community as a result. So I'm not, that is a good thing, that, that the councils have always done that. But it was, in fact, a compromise in order to avoid the dispute, to allow them to, to hear what the council was saying, and this conversation may have input on what they come back with, the level of detail the next time around, I don't know. We have an extension till January thirteenth, seventeenth, and so there. And so there, there is still more time. You wouldn't have to act tonight. I am sure MAC would like you to act tonight. The guide plan amendment takes a two-thirds vote. The text amendment to the zoning takes a majority vote.
Thank you. Council member Aho.
What would be the, the resulting actions or, or what, what do you, in your opinion, Mr. Russo, would, would happen if we were to not approve the, the text change or the text amendment to the guide plan that we're, that we're looking at here tonight? If we just said, no, we're not going to approve that, that text change, what would, what would be the resulting action?
If there was a, if, I presume you're saying it came to a vote and it didn't pass?
Correct.
Uh, I believe MAC would take that as a, as a repudiation of the process, that both of us have the opportunity to do that, and then would go about doing their developments, plans without the city input.
So, given, given that, I guess, I, you know, I think, right now, we're not approving any specific development. We're not approving any specific plans. I think, to me, I would like to proceed with this part of it so that we can, we can investigate this further. Gives us the opportunity to have a seat at the table as we talk and, and really look at how we can be a part of this process and get as much out of this as we possibly can, given that we are in more of a subjective position than, than being able to control this.
Council member Wickstrom.
Yes. Well, it's this forced relationship again that we've had for so many years. My concerns are, just like council member Aho's, that if we remove ourselves from this dialogue and conversation, we will not have that seat at the table. We will not be in conversation. I do not think we can afford that. I don't think we can afford to do that for a residence. So I want to do whatever it is that keeps us in conversation so that we are not left out of the loop, which has been a worry that I've had about this. So I would like to do that same thing. And if that's what it means, if it means setting up this mechanism and, you know, helping us with the, or defining the language, I'm willing to do that so that we are not out in the cold without an opportunity to have some say about what happens. I don't think we can afford it.
I have a question for Mr. Franzen. By creating these two new zones, airport commercial and airport office, we already have commercial on airport property, correct? I mean, Thunderbird Aviation, that's commercial business that's on airport property. So do we, would this classification now be applied to anything that happens with their site?
No, it's only for the parcels they have identified.
Okay.
And one of the reasons for that is that that's an aeronautical use?
Oh, yeah. Okay. Right. Right. Okay. Council member Nelson.
Yeah, I've got to agree. I want to get as much like-normal buildings on these properties as possible. On the other hand, I would like to send a very strong message to MAC that partial, parcel one, two, and parcel six need a whole lot of work from where they are right now. That I'm not happy with those areas. And that the, there could be a huge amount more discussion unless they get real positively creative in those areas. That it is near residences and that, you know, they might want to start first with things that are more equitable for the community than that. You know, I would almost love to take the office piece out of this agreement, but I don't know that that's what we can do. And I do think it's very important that these businesses that ultimately may go in meet our standards for how they look, for the lighting, and to keep things as best as we can. But I don't want this to go out without the message to them that the, the office pieces are really seen as acceptable as they currently sit.
Quick clarification, council member Nelson, I believe that parcel one has already been dropped.
Oh, okay. And one of these things, it said one slash two. So parcel two and parcel six, basically, the office piece needs a great deal of work from what it currently is. And, and I were, is it possible to send that message along with this?
I think by bringing it up now, you're sending it. Council member Aho.
I think one thing we also have to keep in mind is that all of these, all of these potential businesses that would come into these parcels are going to be market-driven, you know? So if we're looking at potentially a, a gas station, convenience store, if it doesn't make sense from a, from a market perspective in terms of return on investment, what business is going to want to go in, into that situation and put their business there? Because they're going to have a huge investment in capital to, to build that out and to, and to be there. And so I think we have to be a little mindful that, you know, while MAC may zone something as, or want something zoned as a particular clarification or classification, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to be able to find a business that's going to want to locate there and have that use. And so we have to be a little bit mindful of that as well when we're, when we're looking at this.
Thank you. All right, council, is there a motion?
I move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for guide plan text amendment to chapter three of the city's comprehensive guide plan, which will identify airport commercial and airport office zoning for the proposed parcels which are currently guided airport, and a text amendment to chapter five of the city's comprehensive guide plan relating to safety zones, and approve the first reading of the ordinance for a text amendment to chapter 11 of the city code to create the airport office and airport commercial zoning districts.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
The motion passes. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. Are there any posts?
Nay.
Okay. Thank you. Four to one. Motion passes. Next public hearing is Bel Reve.
Thank you, mayor and council. The last public hearing tonight is for a zoning district change from rural to R113.5 on 23 acres, preliminary plat of 23 acres into 10 lots. This is located at 10701 Riverview Road. A public hearing was published in the Eden Prairie News and sent to 66 property owners. This is a 10-lot subdivision that would conform to the R113.5 requirements. Planning commission voted eight to zero to recommend approval of the project with the condition that the staff and project proponent reach an agreement on the outlot dedication. As you know, with this project, there's an outlot dedication related to the property that abuts the Minnesota River. I believe the project proponent is here to provide a brief overview of the project, and staff is here as well to answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening. My name's Marty Campion, project engineer with Campion, Campion Engineering. Also here tonight is Mike Gresser, the project proposer, and Keith Waters, the planner. As, as was mentioned, the project is, we're proposing is 10 lots on approximately 23 acres, south side of Riverview Road, in between Belle Oaks Estates on the west and the Vintage Development on the east. It's a very simple project where city sewer and water are available in the northeast corner of the project. We'll extend, extend utilities to the west along Riverview Road and south into the project. Our 10 lots all greatly exceed the R113.5 requirements. As was mentioned, we have been working with staff with Parks and Rec on the outlot. We've made strides in that. They, there isn't anything finalized, but we think once we get staff out onto site to see what we're proposing, I think we're going to be there. That's generally all, all I have. If you have questions of me or the developer or the planner, we're available to answer questions. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Campion?
Can we see, put the development up on the screen? I always hate to do something without, you know, even having it available for anyone who's watching this. I think we should have it. And also, I would like, I assume the home that's currently there is staying there and that which lot that's on, and a little bit of information, please?
The planet, excuse me, the plan on the screen is the preliminary plat that's being proposed. The existing home is shown on lot four and is proposed to, to remain in place. I'll move to the grading plan then after. The, the property has essentially two distinct portions to it. The, the relatively flat portion closer to Riverview Road, and that's what, that's what we're proposing to develop, and the sloped portion to the south of that, that, that extends from the, what's going to be the rear of the developed yards to the Minnesota River. And again, you can see the existing home on lot four and the grading that's proposed for placeholder building pads on the rest of the lots.
Did you have a question?
Well, it's, it's the, the part that you're talking about becoming parkland then is at the very, the side that's closest to the river, I take it?
Yes, I'll, I'll put the preliminary plat back up. The, the portion that's, that's being discussed for trail is the southernmost portion of the property adjacent to the river that will extend some of the trail system that the city already has in place or is intending on acquiring as, as parcels develop in that area.
But lot four is going to continue to contain all that wetland and that sort of jog over, is that correct?
Lot four will, the, the property boundary for the proposed lot four is that. Lots five and six will also extend all the way down to the river, with the exception, what we're, we're also working with staff as to how the, how the property along the river is conveyed to the city, whether it be by easement or outlot.
Okay. We've got definite building pads, though, so the two lots headed down towards the river. You know, there's river bluff in that area, is that correct, maybe staff? Huh?
The, the, the slope is such that it does not meet bluff definition.
It does not meet bluff definition. I'm just concerned a little bit about the building areas on those two particular lots. You know, going down, I would not, and I, we are not going to have to approve those homes as long as they've, it setbacks and such, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. Yes.
Yeah, I don't want homes built on those lots in an area where there all of a sudden could be an issue of them sliding downhill and such. And we've been pretty careful along the whole riverway to make sure things stay far enough back so that's never a consideration. But we don't seem to have that on these two lots. That's my really only consideration, that, you know, they stay far enough up away so that, you know, that, I don't know what the, what are the setbacks on those two lots, considering how close they are to the river? Maybe staff could answer that. They're going to be beautiful lots, obviously.
Council member Nelson, one of the things that maybe they could point out on the plat map is that there's a large scenic easement that would also impact the location of the buildings on lots, I believe it's five and six, that you're concerned with.
Okay, maybe if they could do that.
And you're seeing less than halfway to the south on those lots is where you're seeing a line that demarcates the, the scenic easement. And so that would also limit the location.
Oh, so that really does limit the farther down. Okay. That was, you know, I could view putting a wonderful house past that line and having a wonderful view that might be a little farther down the slope than anybody would want. So it has to be above that line, then? That takes pretty much my questions away, as if it's, that's further up towards the top.
Thank you. Council member case, do you have a question?
Well, my question is, what, what are the arrangements with the scenic easement? So, or is that still something that's being worked out with staff?
Arrangements as far as what can be done?
Like, like a no-touch, or like, you know, you do want to go in and trim out the buckthorn? And, I mean, have you talked that much of a detail yet?
We, excuse me, we have. I'll let Mike speak to that.
We have some language that staff has provided for us that's similar to other scenic easements. And we just want to clarify some things about the, the maintenance of the property. We certainly don't want to remove, right now, the property's in hardwood savanna, is what I would call it. It's really pristine and very much like Eden Prairie was before the development and invasive species ever got a hold of any of the land. That's one thing we want to be careful about within the scenic easement language, that instead of letting it go back and possibly be overtaken by invasive species, that we have some specific language in there. We certainly don't want to remove any of the hardwoods. It's really spectacular. There's a lot of oak and, and walnut. And then as you get further down below, a lot of very tall cottonwood trees that we definitely want to keep and want to keep in pristine condition. But it does require some forestry practices in order to keep it that way. And that's one of our goals that we have within the neighborhood, that, that we have a, a trail proposed, a grassland trail, and not a, not an impervious surface trail for the use of the entire neighborhood. And then also an observation area that's, that's back on, on lot four, which would be my lot, I'm the homeowner. And we just want to be able to continue to enjoy there. It actually is a very tame slope. It's about a 14 to 15 degree slope on average. Some of it's relatively steep, but the rest of it is not very sloped. And I just did want to add to your question, the house pad, as it's proposed right now, the floor elevation of the house that's being designed on lot number six, I believe, is a lot furthest to the east, the large one going down to the river, actually a setback further from the river than the vintage homes is to the east of it. There's a couple of homes on the vintage that actually get a little bit further down the slope.
Yeah, I, I can, there is a lot of buckthorn on that river edge, you know, in that general neighborhood. So I can see why you might want to keep that up.
Really, staff's been very cooperative and it's been, we're working through the finer minutia points on that. We'll have that for the, the next meeting. All of those details handled. And there, there is one point, and I do want to bring it up and just wanted the council to hear it. We haven't made an issue, because my engineer understands that typically would be the work, things work in a development. I, from a practical standpoint, just want to talk about, as of now, my home, as it's located, is served by city sewer and water. The home was built in the, the 1930s, and it got city sewer and water when Belle Oaks Estates was developed to the west of it, and the trunk line came through. City has asked that we rehook my house up, abandon the existing lines, and hook up from our trunk city sewer and water that's going to come in. I understand the reasoning behind that, because it just lays it out more simply. I, I believe, number one, it seems to me, from just an economic standpoint, it's somewhat wasteful for us to have to duplicate and now abandon a perfectly good functioning city sewer and water system, number one. Number two, I have two hackberry and two oak trees on my property that I have aerial photos from the 1940s. And these trees already tower over our home that was built there in the 1930s. And we're going to have to bore through the root systems of those trees to bring in the city sewer and water. And it just, it was an issue that I wanted to bring up in And it just, it was an issue that I wanted to bring up and I thought from a practical standpoint, yes, we would be unique and that we're served to the west, but I think the city could adequately, uh, know that and its record keeping to be able to serve it. So it was just, that was the one other finer point I wanted to bring up. Could we please just spare these old growth hardwood trees and my expenses as the developer in, in that city sewer and water? So those are the only, the, the finer language points on the, uh, the scenic easement and, and conservation easement. The, uh, getting the, uh, the dedication and/or easements. Uh, there's some reasons why it might be better for our landowners to agree to dedicate, uh, because they can take advantage of the tax advantage that I couldn't as a corporation if I dedicate. And I'm hoping just to be able to solve the city's need to have a trail. We certainly want the trail system and want it to be parkland down at the river. It's just an easy, issue of how the legal convenience works to accomplish every of these goals and make it work out well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Case?
Well, I just had a comment possibly more towards staff, but I want to, I, I want to support, I think, because of the precedence up and down the bluff there, that there, there are ways that we ought to be cleaning out and keeping clean the Prairie Oaks Savanna along the bluff. Keeping in mind, it's, no pun intended here, but I've got to use the word slippery slope. But it's a slippery slope because there's a neighbor to the east that has just recently cut a lot of trees down and gotten in trouble for that. And so clearly, we want to have, you know, a way to cut the buckthorn out, um, uh, keep, keep the Prairie Oaks Savanna healthy, but not, not take it too far. So I don't know if that means, uh, the owner, uh, it's written maybe into the agreements, but they submit, um, a plan of what they're going to do and then staff looks at and approves it. But I just think the owners of the conservation easements need to be able to continue to keep the buckthorn out and care for it and maintain it, knowing that, you know, our intent, of course, nobody wants to cut down the oak trees. And so I, I just would really like staff to work with, uh, this project to maybe word this correctly, to allow them access to do what they need to do to keep it healthy and then, and then worry about the slippery slope part of it of other people.
Uh, Mr. Rosso?
Perhaps directly to Mr. Case's point and the, and the earlier comment about, um, the scope of the conservation easement. The typical, the normal conservation easement that you see attached to every development agreement that has a conservation easement says the easement area shall be preserved predominantly in its natural condition. No trees, shrubs, or other vegetation shall be planted or removed without the prior consent of the city. And, um, goes on to talk about the removal of noxious weeds upon submission and approval of a vegetation management plan. So it covers, I think, all of the issues that Councilmember Case has just raised about, uh, there is a process already in place in that document for consultation with the city to, uh, remove, uh, vegetation that is not healthy for that area. And there's, uh, a process for a vegetation management plan to do that, uh, as well. And so I think all that can be accommodated within the easement that we have.
Could we hear from staff if there really is a compelling reason not to allow Mr. Gresser to hook up, or to stay hooked up to his, um, westerly connection?
I can, I can attempt to address that question. I know right now that the services do, um, serve Mr. Gresser's home coming from the west to the east. It crosses another neighbor's property perhaps too, I can't remember. I know it crosses at least, uh, one neighbor's property. And generally, we like to avoid those types of situations where you have private utilities crossing another private property. Because if there are, if there's a need to replace those facilities, do repair on them, uh, the city often gets involved with, uh, a situation where one property owner is not happy with the restoration.
It does go down in easement though, correct?
They may be, I can't answer that question tonight.
It probably does go down in easement in plenty of lots.
I don't know, uh, the records were kind of spotty on the installation of, of those service lines. So that would be the general premises, that we like to avoid those where possible. We could certainly look at the specific situation and if there is no possible way to provide services down the new road to the home because of impacts to trees, uh, we can take that into account to see if there would be some way to, to issue a waiver. But generally speaking, we like to avoid one neighbor's services coming across to another neighbor's property.
Can I add?
Councilmember Aho?
I just have a question. We, we've been calling this a couple of different things, this easement. And on the plat drawing that I'm showing, it shows a scenic easement, but we've also been talking about a conservation easement. Are we talking about the same thing and do these same rules apply to both a conservation easement as a scenic easement?
Uh, the name of the document that I was reading from is the Conservation Scenic Easement, so I believe it's the same.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to clarify on that, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, just going back to the, um, sewer and water connection, I'll admit, those are beautiful oak trees, you know, that really benefit the area. And oaks can be a little touchy about having their, you know, root system. And Eden Prairie's done a lot of things to keep beautiful trees like that. So I very clearly want that to be taken into account. Um, those trees are almost what I would call landmark trees. And, um, so whatever, you know, before final reading on this, one, I'd like an answer to that. And, um, I, I'd sort of like this to be taken in, just like they, anytime you're looking in exception to rules, that this could be one of them, given the size and just the fact that they're one of the things that people totally expect to see along that stretch of road.
Okay, any other questions? This is a public hearing, is there anyone from the audience that wants to adjust the counsel on Belle Reve?
Can I make one comment relative to the services? I, I think the, the city concern or staff concern is valid. And what we propose is extend service to the property as part of the development, not, not require hookup until there's an issue with the existing service that would cause them to get into a neighbor's property.
That's a, that's a good compromise, yeah.
I would, um, move then to close the, is, is that fine? Okay, I would move to close the public hearing and approve first reading for the ordinance for zoning district change from rural to R-113.5 on twenty-three acres and adopt the resolution for preliminary plat on twenty-three acres into ten lots and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Annie Adams to question. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Worthing?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll-Lookin?
Aye.
Next section is ordinances and resolutions, and we have an approval for the reading of an ordinance amending various portions of city code. Mr. Rosso?
I, Mayor, I can take it, I'm sure Mr. Rosso.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant.
That's okay, that's okay.
There's two recs.
There's two recs.
Just wanted the recs to it.
That's okay. Uh, Mayor and council, you may recall, uh, we had a resident approach to council, uh, earlier this year and asked us to, uh, council asked us as well to do some research into our, uh, stormwater rates and our stormwater classifications. And in this case, it was someone who had lived in either a townhome and a condominium. And in their case, uh, their stormwater rate, their residential stormwater rate was higher than a single-family rate. And you, you may remember, Mr. Ellis, uh, um, provided a kind of, a very good overview that with several of these association townhome condo areas, you may have a lot of, um, you know, impervious surface throughout the association related to how we calculate stormwater fees and acreage. But still, after taking, uh, a close look over the year at the stormwater classifications, we've, uh, come forward with a recommendation that we would like to classify townhomes and, um, similar properties as single-family residential. And there is a, uh, a small, uh, we would think very small minor revenue impact to the stormwater fund of about twenty thousand dollars. But in the grand scheme of that fund, we think in terms of maybe fairness and then how we took another look at this ordinance, that this might be a better way of approaching it. And as with any, uh, ordinance that we look at, um, we want to look at the entire ordinance. So all the other bullet items are related to recommendations by finance for major housekeeping items to line up our current practice of billing and metering with, uh, what the code would say. So quite frankly, this is really all about that one issue related to townhome classification. And, uh, the other items are, um, housekeeping. And, uh, Mr. Ellis also can answer questions related to this potential revision.
Okay, any questions? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion?
Move to approve the first reading of the ordinance amending various positions of city code, Chapter Three, entitled Municipal and Public Utilities Rules and Regulations Rates Changes and Collections. City Code, Chapter One, entitled General Provisions and Definitions Applicable to the Entire City Code, including Penalty for Violation in Section 3.99, entitled Violation of Misdemeanor.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Reports of councilmembers, Mr. Case?
Just very quickly, just to direct staff in some way to, um, maybe take this wherever it needs to go with the bee issue and, um, some, develop some way to solicit, um, some type of community input. I'm sure there's people on both sides, we might want to hear the perspectives, but, um, I think it's, um, worth pursuing.
Might want to give a little bit of preface for the people at home that weren't hearing during the open forum.
There was a person that came, uh, to, um, the open forum tonight asking for, um, the idea that bees, honeybees, might be not considered farm animals, which are excluded from our residential neighborhoods because of many other cities, including Minneapolis and St. Paul and Menetaka that permit them. And just to, um, investigate that. And so I, I, I don't want to spend more time tonight, but take it, um, through some kind of process, whatever commission that would be.
Thank you.
They said honeybees, not chickens, right?
Yes.
Honeybees, honeybees.
Um, I also had something during reports of councilmembers, and that is, um, there's kind of an issue on Star Lake Parkway when Oak Point School gets out. The traffic congestion is unbelievable, the amount of people trying to get in to, um, the lower parking lot at Oak Point, simultaneously about the same number trying to get out, and nobody can go anywhere. And there are people, residents, that are trying to drive through Star Lake Parkway and don't, don't want to turn into Oak Point School, that are finding themselves in difficult situations, dangerous situations, where they're kind of crossing into the opposing lane of traffic to get around people. Meanwhile, people are making left-hand turns and it's really bad. Something needs to be done, and I think that we need to approach the school district and talk about the, um, the issue there. So if staff could look into that.
We will.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Can we go back to Ron's?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Because, um, you know, I don't mind looking into it, but I would like to go on record at least being very much in favor of what the ordinance currently states. And I am not particularly interested in changing it whatsoever.
All right, thank you. Our public work director is going to make a report tonight, Mr. Ellis.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight before he is a resolution approving a purchase agreement for some excess right-of-way the city owns near the intersection of Homeward Hills Road and Sunnybrook Road. And just to give you a little bit of background, uh, there is some excess right-of-way that is no longer needed now that Homeward Hills has been constructed, the trail, uh, and all the easements that we need for utilities is in place. There's also a non-conforming structure that's located in that corner that the city is interested in seeing, uh, that corner being improved. And that property owner has approached us and, um, solicited the acquisition of that property. And we were interested, interested in transferring the property. We did go to the planning commission on August thirteenth to make sure, uh, that it was, uh, in their mind compliant with our comprehensive guide plan. They did approve the sale of the property. And once that was completed, we did advertise it in Eden Prairie News and opened it up to the market. We did receive, uh, as we suspected, only the one bid. And it did meet our minimum, we had a minimum reserve of thirteen thousand, and they submitted a bid of thirteen thousand, one dollar. And we are ready to move forward after negotiating the terms of the purchase agreement. I think what the city gets out of this is an improved corner. Their intent is to demolish the existing structure, and that would be a requirement of the purchase agreement. And then ultimately, with the acquisition of this property, they'll have enough property to actually subdivide their existing parcel into two parcels, which will be zoned single-family, that's also a requirement of the purchase agreement. So I think it's a win-win. Uh, I think that, uh, the neighborhood will get, uh, an improved corner at that intersection. And I think the, the city doesn't really have a need for that excess property, so, uh, we get to put it to its highest beneficial use. So, uh, of course, we do support this and would ask for your concurrence.
Uh, Mr. Ellis, will access to both those pieces of property be off Sunnybrook Road?
They will not. The current access for the structure that's there will remain in place once the new building is built, and that is off Sunnybrook. The new lot to the south of this parcel will come off of the most southern part of the lot on Homeward Hills Road. And I'm comfortable with that, it's far enough south and it's on the west side of the parcel. So I think that eliminates some of the conflicts that you might see had this parcel been on the east side of Homeward Hills Road.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councilmember Nelson?
Um, one thing, I drive that stretch of road all the time. And there's sort of an S curve to the south of that property that's very, very dark at night. And so if there's going to be a driveway coming out onto Homeward Hills, in addition to this, we are going to have to put in streetlights into that S curve. Or it would be very, very dangerous at night because it's one of those areas where you need to put your high beams on if there's no car in front of you or coming. Cause you can't see, you can't see the potential for deer or anything else going through there. So if the city is going to do this, we also have, are going to have to put some light into that area, which is going to have a definite cost to it. And I don't think we should be approving this without approving some streetlights in the bottom of that S curve.
There would be an opportunity as the subdivision moves forward, the actual plating of that property for, to require the developer to put in that streetlight. With the subdivision, this property will also come, some additional fees the city will receive in the form of park dedication fees, trunk water and sewer fees. Uh, so there, we are really receiving much more than the thirteen thousand dollar purchase agreement. But there would be that opportunity to require the developer to do that through the subdivision process.
I, I'm not concerned about this, but it is a stretch of road that almost, in my opinion, we need to put some light on anyway. And, but you certainly, if there's going to be a driveway coming out there, um, it absolutely has to be done.
Okay, is there a motion?
Yes, I move to adopt a resolution approving purchase agreement for excess right-of-way near Homeward Hills Road and Sunnybrook Road.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, um, also, Mr. Ellis.
Yes, the last item of the night, uh, will be a resolution to receive the feasibility report for, and to set the public hearing for the Eden Prairie Road Improvement South of Riley Creek. And perhaps a little bit of history would be in order, as this item actually goes back, uh, as far as the records I could find, to two thousand and one, when the city council at that time asked for a feasibility report for the construction of this roadway. And shortly after that, staff had neighborhood meetings with the adjacent property owners, and there was really no interest in this moving forward. It was the wrong time, there wasn't a lot of interest in development, and there was also concern about not having a secondary access to Prospect Road. And so really, it died on the vine at that point in time. Uh, what's changed since then is the ridge at Riley Creek. We've got the meadows now at Riley Creek, we also have Eden Prairie Woods. So we have a lot of development activity in that area. And we actually have the first layer of asphalt on Prospect Road, so that road is, uh, almost nearly complete. And those things have actually allowed this to move forward. And there's a lot of interest from, uh, the property owners in that neighborhood. They, uh, are being contacted by developers. Uh, I understand that, uh, there are, um, some offers that are out there, and they're eager to move forward. And they know that Eden Prairie Road needs to be in place in order to facilitate that orderly growth. And so we have prepared the feasibility report. Our next steps will be, uh, to have a series of neighborhood meetings, meet with the, the benefactors of this property, um, or this project, people that will actually be assessed the final costs. And it is a large project, estimated at four point five million dollars. Uh, but we have a very good feasibility report, we will take that to the public to get their input. And then we will be back on November twentieth for the public hearing and an opportunity for the public to actually voice their opinion to the council on the feasibility report. But, uh, I do think now is the time, and if we are going to see continued development down there, we do need to have Eden Prairie Road reconstructed, it's reached the end of its useful life.
Okay, thank you, questions for Mr. Ellis?
Who would pay this four and a half million? Is that city or is that the property owners or?
Most of it would be the benefiting property owners. The city does have some property in that area, so we would also be assessed or pay a very, you know, not a small portion, but our share of the total project cost. The lion's The lion's share would be paid by the properties in that area. Now, keep in mind that when the ridge at Riley Creek was developed, they all escrowed, all of those lots as they were sold, they escrowed a portion of money to pay for this future assessment they knew was coming. Also with the meadows at Riley Creek and with Eden Wood, Eden Woods, they've also escrowed that money or paid that money upfront. So a lot of it has already been collected or placed in escrow. But a lot of the oversized lots that we have now, the five-acre parcels, a lot of the undeveloped property, they know that development is coming, and those are the ones that, you know, probably have the most comments during the feasibility report process, but I think the costs are actually very reasonable, considering the scope of the project.
All right. Is there a motion?
I have a move to adopt a resolution to receive feasibility report and set a public hearing date for Eden Prairie Road improvement south of Riley Creek.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Any other business? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.